Council meeting briefing to order. First thing is the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission accomplishments and the way forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. It's great to be here again. I'll tell you, I really appreciate Virginia Beach, and we also appreciate your donation of revenues. We finished up July, just to give you a quick sound bite, $803.8 million we picked up in revenues, and of that, 216 million of those came right here from Virginia Beach. So you all can be very proud of your participation and also your contributions and your citizens to what you're going to hear about today, because we have a lot of great things to talk about. Real game changer for us was the creation of the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund, as you all very well know, back in House Bill 2313 in 2013. We, HRTAC, were created in 2014. It's very important to think about what our empowerment is. Northern Virginia, they have a lot of different commissions and authorities up there that handle many different aspects of transportation. But what the founding fathers up the legislature did was they gave us the ability to procure finance build and operate highway, bridge, tunnel, road, rail, and transit projects right here in Hampton Roads. So we're kind of like a one-stop shop for transportation. And again, it was that authorization of the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund monies that changed things, that brought that funding down to HRTAC and also allows a region through our collective collaboration at the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization moving forward. And that collaboration, you don't see many places in the United States like we have it here, but it's a very strong bond between the TPO and HRTAC. But we do also, I think, as a region, come together and also recognize the separation, kind of like church and state. TPO sets the projects, then HRTAC goes and finds a way to pay for them and make them happen. I mentioned earlier about your contributions from your jurisdiction in the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund. A little bit of soundbites for you here. As you can see, our sales and use tax revenue was going up, but our fuels tax was going down. Those revenues are going down, as you know, the electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles are coming to the table, fuel economy is getting better, and of course, we tend not to drive as much as we used to with fossil fuel vehicles. So it's a game changer for us, the legislature floored the gas tax for the regional funds for the HRTF, and we picked up $20 million a year on that, hopefully anticipated coming forward. So that's a big contribution, helps stabilize, as well as our interest income is up, we're at $9.2 million last year. So what did you all, all of us do for the last 20 years? I wasn't here 20 years ago, I was working for the state of Virginia, but I did spend, as you know me, spent a lot of time down here on transportation-related issues and projects and solutions. But for two decades, we studied this collaboratively. And it's amazing what had taken 20 years to evolve is now, in four years, turned into this. Everything you see in red is funded, under construction, and up for delivery. It's just an astounding amount of progress that's been made by this region moving forward, as I'll talk to you about in just a few minutes, about what's going on down here in Virginia Beach. But as you can see, we have $549 million in these projects, and these are the delivery dates now, these are real dates. 2022, we'll have the Peninsula segments one and two delivered. 2021, we'll have your I-64, 264 interchanges, phase one and two, all the way down to Witch Duck completed. 2019, we'll have, hopefully, the interchange projects for phase three that's been funded for study. High-rise Bridge, which, by the way, if you go over High-Rise regularly, I tend to, you'll see they have the crane up on the eastern side of the eastern slope approach to the bridge, and they're driving piles on that project today. So it's a great thing moving forward on that as well. So 2021, you'll see your 264. 2022, you'll see all the way up to Pierce's Barbecue Exit, 199, 234, and also your 264 improvements here, right down here. Hopefully, we'll be heading a plan that'll get us down to Witch Duck moving forward on that. And I think there's been some really good collaboration and communication, both from the city and also the TPO and HRTAC, talking about how that project looks at the next set of plans. Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, of course, we've got some studies there as well. Bowers Hill Interchange, 460, 5813, and we've had some challenges out there on that project, that $5 million project, we've been able to identify some wetlands we're probably not going to be able to work around in a very easy way. And also, as we move forward, you'll see Fort Eustis Boulevard interchange out as far as 2038 on that as well. Fort Eustis Boulevard interchange also includes the eight-laning of phase one, or segment one, as some know it as, on I-64, as you move out there, that first six miles. So that's why that ticket is a little bit higher than what most might think. So here we are today, where we were four years ago, about just a couple of months ago. I think it took, what, about eight or nine votes to elect the first chair of HRTAC. Now we're at $1.45 billion worth of projects, and $1.23 billion of it is coming from this region. We're lifting our boat, just like the tide, and we're going to get that to shore and have those projects moving forward, as you can see very quickly. Some of the high-bar accomplishments also is the award of the $150 million of smart-scale funding in 2017, and also our phase-two project down here in Virginia Beach, that construction also got kicked off and funded in 2017. Adopted HRTAC short and long-range funding plans, which I'll talk about in just a minute. We also had the ribbon cutting on the first six miles of the 21 miles of the peninsula. Just, it was a really good success story for us down here in the region, where you can have a governor come down, a one-term governor, put a foot on a shovel in the ground, then turn around and cut the ribbon for it, all in that same term of office. So it's very seldom you actually ever see that occur in a one-term governor, where you have a major infrastructure project that gets started and completed in the same term. But not only did we did that, we also had a couple of groundbreakings in that cycle as well. And so we also, getting into the bond market, part of our funding plan included us becoming also debt holders of the region, and we did have our initial bond offering in January, which was very successful. We sold a half a billion dollars' worth of bonds, they were premium revenue bonds that came in at $583 million. Many different phases of that, as you all know, as you deal in your bonding and debt as well. We had several times of ever-subscription on those bonds, and we performed very well in the market on that initial tranche. We also passed our funding plan, which had some assumptions in it that I think are very clear, and to your city manager's point, that as we were discussing coming in the room today, it's an important time for me to be before you today and thank you for your valuable time, because the HRBT project is starting to advance. It entered our six-year program in 2019. We also funded $25 million to move that project forward, and that's what VDOT is doing today. We've started our bonding activity. We also have some marks in the sand here. Our funding plan includes any toll revenues that are generated by HRTAC-funded projects in the '64 quarter, come back to HRTAC and help offset the region's cost of the project that they're participating in. Also, we're still working with VDOT on, gnashing our teeth on that moving forward, trying to get that agreement pushed out, as well as the smart-scale funding for HRTAC. At HRTPO, the Transportation Planning Organization is the official applicant for the region for the, what they refer to as statewide significant smart-scale funds. So they've submitted a $200 million application for this coming funding cycle to offset the costs of HRBT, and that's the new capacity project moving forward. It's kind of neat there, getting a little bit finger painting here. Everything you see in green is funding underway and will be delivered by 2024, and what you see in purple are some of the outstanding items that are still under study. But look at the significant progress that we can all celebrate here, in just a short period of time, will be completed within the next six years. I think I'm very proud of my participation in this, and thank you all for having me as your executive director, because these kinds of times are not duplicated very often in people's generations, and these are generational projects that will impact future generations of Virginia Beach and the region for generations to come. So I'm going to run through very quickly just some show and tell here. Segment one, the widening there, as you know, on 64 is now complete and underway. It's kind of neat how we brought the community together, and VDOT did. When we were working on the sound walls, the community was given an opportunity to actually pick the design that was on the sound walls, like the starfish. Many people think it's just a military star, but it's the starfish that they chose to go on those sound walls, and it was part of, again, some of the social outreach we had with the community moving forward. That's the six-mile section, the seven-mile section, remember, six, seven, and eight miles, that's how you get to the 21. Segment two is the eight-mile section moving forward, and at seven-mile section, excuse me, moving forward. That project today is on new asphalt, they've shifted it over, started tearing up the old asphalt. That gets us out to, from Fort Eustis out to 199, the first one, Busch Gardens Exit, and then segment three will take us all the way out to what I'll refer to as the outlet mall, Pierce's Barbecue Exit, exit 234. So our challenges here is going to be the Colonial Parkway and also the Queens Creek Trestles. Just for Bob Mathias's sake, he always honed in on that, because he felt like we didn't need to be paying as HRTAC for an existing deficient bridge system, or to-be-deficient bridge system, because it was considered deferred maintenance. So he helped us push for the smart-scale funding, so I appreciate Bob's participation in that effort, and Virginia Beach supporting him as an employee. So moving forward a little bit, let's see here, here we go. Moving forward is, you all's favorite, I'm sure, project, or one of many in the region that are a favorite to you. This is the 264 phase-one project, you know it's steel and girder, and the decks are all coming together very nicely. This project has gone extremely well as we've moved forward. It's a $157 million project for phase one. Phase two is a $195 million project. Again, all of this is going to be in place by 2021. We also were able to secure $50 million of smart-scale funding, and VDOT had already contributed about $11 million as well. So of the total project cost, almost $60 million-ish, plus or minus, is HRTAC funded through the region's transportation revenues. So again, a great, great success story to talk about. High-rise Bridge, as I mentioned, they're driving piles now. You're going to see a lot of ribbon tape going up from there all the way out to Bowers Hill. That project is going to include not only the additional capacity at High-Rise Bridge, it'll be a four-lane bridge with three lanes and a shoulder, but we'll also have hot shoulder running, which means you can run during peak periods, very similar to how you do with the 264 segments down here in Virginia Beach. During peak periods, you'll be able to use the shoulder as well. So when we open this project, we're going to end up with an extra lane during capacity peak that we hadn't originally anticipated, so that'll be a success story there moving forward, not only with the six-laning, but now having the eight-lane available, eight lanes available on the system. Our next big hurdle at HRTAC is going to be Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. As you know, that project has proven over years to be extremely challenging. It's had its ups and downs, and I like to call them false starts, as some proposals came in over time as to how to develop this project. This is a great story, where the region came together, HRBT moving ahead is a project. At that time, your former mayor, our former chair, Will Sessoms, was leading the charge as well, and I'll give him some credit there, and his leadership at HRTAC, and also Virginia Beach's participation at the Transportation Planning Organization, to come together and actually make HRBT one of the high-priority projects in the region. It's a generational project moving forward, it's very successful, we think, in alleviating congestion, and I think it'll be a real positive charge to the transportation network and also the economy all the way to the waterfront. Of $3.66 billion in year of expenses, we've provided $25 million of seed funds to further develop that project. At the HRTAC meeting just last Thursday, an additional $5 million was put in process to move forward, with the commission voting on that in November, to add to that project, to keep the lights on, on that project until March of next year. The significance of March of next year is that's when they plan to announce and award the contract for construction to the design build team. It's a planning-level funding estimate of about $3.662 billion. Of that, we're about $100 million-plus shy at HRTAC as the funding agent for delivery. We're anticipating smart-scale funds that, as I mentioned to you earlier, have been applied for, as well as the anticipated use of those toll revenues moving forward as well. It's about $365 million in toll revenues that we're applying to this project, as well as $200 million of smart scale is what we're anticipating as well. So any of those out there that have anyone, that might know anyone at the CTV, they might just mention a little hint there that we are anticipating $200 million on that project as we apply it as a minimum. Moving forward with that, you know, with like all of our other projects, you know, we're continuing to work together to advance them, $200 million, I mentioned earlier for you, just to get that visual in front of you as well. Plus also, the current assumptions that HRTAC's forecast, we have our eye on that toll revenue as we move forward. It's not the hot toll revenue for the reversible lanes, because VDOT already has that encumbered, and they have that back, some of those capitalizations back to the revolving toll fund account. But on the projects that HRTAC has funded and has been put into place, we're anticipating the revenues off of those projects. This slide you have not seen before, likely, other than the mayor, you were at the HRTAC meeting, thank you for being there, with Secretary Valentine. It was somewhat of an eye-opener for all of us to see what was set before us at that meeting, where VDOT is moving forward under the direct leadership of Stephen Britch, and of course, reporting through the Secretary of Transportation, to advance what they refer to as the Hampton Roads Express Lane Network in the region. So they weighed in, they look at the network to go all the way up, segment four takes you up to the Colosseum further west, all the way up to where our segment-one project in the peninsula begins, and those HOV lanes end. So they're starting up there, they're coming all the way down. The Colosseum is where things turn gray, I may point to the screen, and this section right here is a six-lane section today, but it's all general purpose, where the state is looking at closing one of the open general-purpose lanes and converting that to a hot lane. So there's a potential that we could lose capacity on the corridor, this critical corridor here, where it could potentially create a choke point. So here we are down here, spending $3.5 billion worth of revenues, both toll and HRTF revenues, to relieve a congestion project up here, and we've got to be careful we don't end up like Northern Virginia at Garrisonville, creating a gauntlet by virtue of the actions that we have, on our team, provide some input on. Segment three is what our project is moving forward, the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, Hampton University, which is Settlers Landing all the way down to 564. One of the other challenges that we have at 564 is, is that the original project is perceived to not have any direct connectors to 564 in and out of the HOV capacity. So what VDOT is doing and working with the design build contractors is as added as an option, some ideas as to what could be a connector, a connector ramp to 564, which will be bid as an option on the project, which is an additional expense over what the numbers were I just gave you. Segment one are the reversible hot lengths today, and then segment two picks up here at the end of the hot, just down and moves all the way around to Bowers Hill. So that takes the HOV plus, plus, the HRTAC project moving all the way around to Bowers Hill will go hot. So that's what the Secretary of Transportation presented at the HRTAC meeting last Thursday. I'm sure that the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization will have a lot of conversation at its next meeting, which is in October, not only on this, but also in better defining its position on tolling and also in how the projects will move forward, including the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. Got a lot going on between now and Christmas, and we hope to have all that wrapped up before Thanksgiving, so I'll hopefully have time to give thanks for all of this. So our next steps, we're going to continue to develop solutions on the $1.45 billion projects we have underway. We did our inaugural bond issue. I just today authorized the wire transfer to pay for the down payment on the processing fee to TFIYA. TFIYA is a credit vehicle that's offered from the United States government through the US DOT. It's what they call a security fixed-rate loan, where you can lock in today on today's security rates and not have to exercise it until overtime or until the project is completed. What that does for us is allow us to borrow at today's interest rates and then exercise the loan like a letter of credit as time goes on, as we need it. So that's a very forward-thinking opportunity for us, and again, trying to find our ways to be as efficient as possible in the region, to move forward on how we fund our projects. Also, we have, you know, we have a lot of agreements to develop here. One is the tolling, as to how we're going to deal with the toll network. The other one is how we'll fund the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, and also how the entire network will work collaboratively and be interfaced in the region and moving forward. We're also going to work with the TPO for impacted jurisdictions for the remaining projects outside of the SEIS. So as you may recall, when Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel was added, Patriots Crossing was dropped in, and also what they referred to as the Monterey Mary Magpitri's Third Crossing. So that combination has been put back on the table, is being studied under the Hampton Roads Crossing Study, or Regional Connector Study, as they call it at the TPO. And also, we have the TPO right now has had a call for project candidate projects to add to the 2045 update, which I understand and have seen some correspondence that came out of Virginia Beach, working forwards as to how we take 264 to the next iterative step, extending it from Witch Duck to Independence, and also including the Independence Boulevard interchange. As you all may recall, that VDOT, as they started the project, the 264 project, had kind of identified that their iterative step process was going to be to start at the interchange and work east towards the waterfront. So this is the next deliberate step moving forward with that. And I appreciate all that the city has done, as well as VDOT, in moving forward with that project as a potential candidate project moving forward. So, Mr. Mayor and members of council, again, I'm very happy to be here today and answer any questions that you may have, and again, thank you for your contributions, your citizens' contributions in support of the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund and also HRTAC moving forward.
Ms. Kane has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Page, for being here.
Yes, ma'am.
On page 19, when you mentioned the Hampton bottleneck possibility, how problematic is that looking, or when will we know, or how does that play out, or how do we give our input so that that doesn't become a bottleneck?
You're asking the exact right question, that Tom Shepherd, who's the current chair
of the HRTPO, Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, expressed very openly to the Secretary of Transportation, because Mr. Shepherd's also on our board at HRTAC last Thursday, that he felt like the TPO needed to be more involved in this process, that the region needed to be more involved in this process. And part of that is the traffic and safety study that VDOT is conducting today in the gray area, and again, this will be a discussion item, I feel very confident, at the TPO meeting, is how the region will have an opportunity to weigh in on the potential impacts of the traffic and safety and the movement of people in that gray area, as well as the overall connectivity into the hot lane network. And I believe at that time, we'll have a very clear understanding when the traffic and safety study is complete, and also the TPO staff of experts has an opportunity to weigh in as well.
And when does that traffic study complete again?
November.
Oh, this November.
Yes, ma'am. Things are moving very quickly.
You said we want to give thanks.
Yes, ma'am. We're going to have this all wrapped up, hopefully, behind us and moving forward by Thanksgiving, I hope.
Kevin, there seemed to be an impasse at the last meeting, as far as the funding for the trestle repair and so forth.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you for bringing that to the attention of the council, because I think it's a very good point to segue into what we refer to as the additional work identified by VDOT. Is it okay to talk a little bit about that, Mayor?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Solution, I'd like to hear it.
Okay.
I'm sure anybody in that meeting had one.
It's been somewhat of a jaw dropper, moving forward as to how we fund this project, is that as the region is moving to fund the additional capacity, that the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund is restricted to additional capacity that brings the greatest congestion relief to the region. There are also the old trestles, some dating back to the 1950s, that go out to the islands for the tunnel. And the remaining trestles that aren't going to be reconfigured or modified to get the new tunnel and the new bridge system in, remain to be replaced, because they are not deficient today, but they are nearing their useful life, and their deficiency will get to a point of having to be repaired or replaced, as the commissioner of VDOT has identified five years after we complete the HRBT project. So what VDOT has requested is that those, or recommended is, is that those trestles be replaced in their entirety, at the same time the HRBT project moves forward, because they don't want to open up the four new lanes and then turn down and shut down the old four lanes. So they want to try to deal with it all at one time. The challenge that we have is, is they've kind of looked towards HRTAC initially to fund the projects, because they feel that it's all part of the project. That's an additional $300 to $500 million. It's an unknown number at this point, but that's the estimate.
But explain to them about the charge that the HRTAC has as far as the expenditure of the funds for new projects.
Right. So as we've moved forward, as the mayor just pointed out, is that you have to look back to the code, and the code says that we can only fund projects that are congestion-relief projects with new construction, new capacity. We see the trestles as an existing capacity, state-of-good-repair project, very similar to how
It's maintenance.
Any facility that Virginia Beach maintains, it's a highway that's existing today and has been there since the 1950s, that improvement, to keep it as it is, capacity, is a state-of-good-repair or maintenance project. So that's our point that we've been making very strongly. And we also have been making the point that we don't want our smart-scale funds that we're anticipating, and the toll revenues that we're anticipating, to offset and contribute to HRTAC's combination of funding for the new capacity, to potentially be diverted to VDOT's deferred maintenance project, which is known as the trestle replacement.
See, the issue is, if they take that money, that's money that we might be able to have here, which might, if they take HRTAC money to pay for the trestle repair, and then that other money is still out there, it may be used somewhere else in the state to our disadvantage, is what it comes to.
That's the challenge we have before us right now. Our current HRTAC Chair, Michael Hippel, actually created a steering committee to help advise the overall commission and work with staff, myself, and council, to guide us and be participants in the negotiations with VDOT. I think he did, Mr. Hippel did a great job for the region, because we have Chris Jones, Chair of the Appropriations Committee of the House, delegate, we have Senator Wagner, who's on the Senate Finance Committee, and also co-chair of the Joint Legislative Transportation Accountability Commission, and the two host mayors, Mayor Alexander, former member of the House and Senate, and also Donnie Tuck, Mayor of Hampton. So, and Mike Hippel make the five-member team moving forward. We've had some closed-door meetings already, several of them, one of those included VDOT, where we started to position with what the mayor just mentioned, starting to posture ourselves so that we can better communicate our position, which has started to lie on the table, and that is, is that, as the mayor just said very well, we anticipate smart-scale and toll revenues to help offset the costing participation, funding contribution of HRTAC on the new bridge and tunnel system, not on the maintenance and upkeep needs of the existing trestles moving forward. We all feel that it's a good time to do it, and the committee as well, that Mr. Hippel created, but it's just, should not be done on the shoulders of HRTAC and the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund and the citizens that support it.
Yes, John.
I have a question relative to some, a couple hours of Wall Street Journal, about now cities are seeing in construction that people won't sign fixed-price contracts, they want costs pass-through escalation because of 25%, 30% increase in steel prices and other materials. And I realize, this, so in March, which is not so far around the corner, and I'm sure you get long leads, what is the price sensitivity to your estimate relative to what the people, if you go to the construction commodity indexes and what they're forecasting in your period, is your price estimate based upon those rapidly rising steel and other kind of commodity prices?
That's a great question, and one that VDOT has been involved in making sure that we had a sufficient contingency on the project going into it. The challenge that I have about the project, and I'm not questioning the chief engineer's perspective or point of view on this, but the use of stainless steel in this project is really going to drive the cost very up. We don't know exactly what the increase rate is going to be, but using stainless steel rebar and stainless steel reinforcing rods in the tunnel itself is what is right now currently under discussion as to moving forward. There's a thought process that an increase cost for stainless steel will increase the longevity of the bridge tunnel and trestle system, which there's no doubt that stainless does much better than pig iron rebar. But the challenge here is, at what point does it become, and this is my point of argument on this, is that if you're adding another 50 or 60 years to the life of this facility, then that means that's 50 or 60 more years that VDOT's not paying to maintain a facility that we're paying for on the front end. So there needs to be some type of credit or shape-shifting of revenues to make sure that, as the mayor said, that money doesn't get spent elsewhere. Those maintenance funds come back to us maybe in a different fashion, shape, or form, but it stays in the Hampton Roads region.
You're anticipating being able to close on a fixed-price contract? You're anticipating being able to close on a fixed-price contract without a cost escalation pass-through?
That's correct. That's what we're hoping. But I can't say that specifically, but it's, you know, those are the discussions as you try to lock in.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Kevin? Thank you very much, Kevin.
All right. Thank you all very much. Great seeing you again. I'll come back at any time. Thank you. Thank you. Take care.
Next item, City Manager's Briefing, Quarterly Flood Control Stormwater Program Update.
Yes, sir. Got a team coming in. And we got Toni Alger. She's going to do a fairly thorough quarterly update for you today. You see the volume of charts. That's why we only have really two major briefings before you get to pending items. And one of the reasons is just, you know, the emphasis that we're placing on our program, but also to answer numerous questions that you've had over the last couple of months since our last quarterly and get you all up to speed. So looking forward to a good briefing.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to start today with the very first slide showing you some photographs. These photos were taken in the southern watershed on July 25th, this past summer. And the picture on the left is, I'm sorry, the picture on the right is Blue Pete's, and the picture on the left is Punggol Ferry Road west of the bridge.
They're out of business right now.
These are the flood control projects that I've been presenting on quarterly. I did add one additional project this time, the Off-Road Ditch Maintenance Program, which is managed by our Public Works Operations Division. All of the projects are currently on schedule, with the exception of Aragona and the Stormwater Master Planning Analysis and Inventory, which I did brief on last time, that the schedules had slipped by a month for both of those. This particular slide is new to my presentation. I thought it would be a good idea to show the location of the projects by district, to give you an idea of how we are dealing with flooding in the areas where flooding is occurring, whether it's in the northern section of Virginia Beach or the southern section of Virginia Beach. So moving into the projects, the first one, Aragona Drainage Improvements. As you know, this project involves increasing the pipes in the neighborhood on two streets, Aragona Boulevard and Overman Avenue. As you know, the project, the neighborhood is old. It was built in 1950s, and the stormwater system is undersized. The project currently is funded for $3.76 million. So the third quarter activities for this project include, the design is ongoing. We're scheduled to advertise for construction in 2018, and we expect construction to take 15 months and be complete in spring of 2020. Asheville Park Drainage Improvements Project. I believe you all are aware of this project is probably about as much as I am. We've presented on this a lot in the last year. This project is Phase 1, and it includes additional stormwater ponds, expanding an existing pond, new channels connecting those ponds. We're going to regrade and stabilize some of the existing ditches. We're going to build a new stormwater pump station, and we're going to have ditch and culvert improvements at the intersection of New Bridge Road and Sand Bridge Road to alleviate the flooding that occurs there. And third quarter activities for this project include, we met with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife on July 3rd to coordinate right-of-way and the design with them. On the same day, council approved the alternate version of Cost Participation Agreement 3, which included the city obtaining the area known as Village D. Notice to Proceed was given for the weir project on July 23rd, and that's expected to be complete in the spring of 2019. On August 7th, council approved the proffering requests by the developer and the transfer of $1 million from the Eastern Shore Drive project to the Asheville Park project to execute the agreement. And we received the 60% design plans for the pump station and the intersection project on September 5th. And I know it's not on the slide, but I did want to mention the Cost Participation Agreement with the developer should be executed this Central Resort District Drainage Improvements, a large multi-phase project, which will include an ocean outfall, pump station, tide gates, and storm drain improvements. The estimated total project cost for all of that is $113 million. We currently have $800,000 appropriated to date, and we're moving ahead with the design of the first interim improvement project, which is replacing the 54-inch pipe at 24th Street with a culvert or a bridge. And that's estimated to cost approximately $6 million. So we are finalizing, we have finalized the work order to begin the design on the 24th Street culvert replacement, and we expect Notice to Proceed for the design in October. Chub Lake, Lake Bradford. As I've mentioned before, this is a compilation of projects to address flooding in three areas, Church Point, Hollis Road, and Chub Lake, Lake Bradford. Initial project estimates for this are $32 million, and this will involve large box culverts under North Hampton, Pleasure House, and Shore Drive. This project currently receives approximately $1.1 million a year from various CIPs. The third quarter activities for this project include, we continue coordinating with the Navy to open the weir when major rain events are forecasted, which we actually had them open the weir this past couple of weeks ago for Florence. The dredging in the ditch between Nider Boulevard and the Boone Clinic culvert is complete, and the survey is complete for the early implementation projects, which are the two ditch projects off of Shore Drive. And on August 20th, we made a presentation to the Chesapeake Beach Civic League meeting to give them an update on the project. Eastern Shore Drive Drainage Phase 1. I keep, I sound like a broken record, another multi-phase large project. For this project, Phase 1, Section 1 and Section 2 are funded, but the full of projects in the remaining phases, which are estimated to cost $83.2 million, are not funded. So we are showing a balance to complete of over $27 million. So on July 20th, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers for a pre-application meeting, and then we submitted the joint permit application package on August 16th. And on September 17th, we were notified that there was no longer available mitigation credits in the public bank that we were planning on using for water quality. So we're now pursuing using credits at another private bank outside of the HUC. This has delayed this interim project by just a month, but we are moving ahead with the Cape Henry Canal Improvement Project, which is the next interim project, which is a box culvert from Ebtide Road to West Great Neck. We expect to advertise that project in November, and it's estimated to cost $3.5 million. Sherwood Lakes Drainage Improvements. This project includes a pump station and an interconnect pipe between the two lakes. On July 24th, the Value Engineering Report was completed, and the only recommendation that was made was to reduce the size of the interconnect pipe from a 54-inch to a 42-inch pipe, which we are pursuing now. That was actually one of the ideas of the Civic League. They were concerned that the pipe was too large, and they would be able to see it coming out of the water. So we are moving ahead with that change to the plans. On July 31st, the bids for that pipe project were opened, and we are expecting to go to Notice to Proceed in October. On August 21st, we presented at the Sherwood Lakes Civic League meeting. And on August 30th, bids for the permanent pump station project were open, and NTP is expected by the end of the year. The Southern Canal Lead Ditch and Culvert Improvements Project. This project is for design and construction of drainage improvements and canals and culverts for ditches located in the southern watershed. The improvements may include pipe and culvert replacement and ditch channel clearing. The construction is timed to avoid inconvenience to the agricultural community and residents, because most of these projects involve detours. This program receives $1.39 million per year, and $990,000 of that comes from the ARP program, Agricultural Reserve Program. So one of the first sites that we are going to be making improvements is on Dolly Road between Pleasant Ridge Road and Gumbridge Road. We're going to do culvert cleaning and excavate and regrade the ditches. The next project is on Gumbridge Road between Dolly Road and Charity Neck Road. We're going to do culvert replacement, widen the ditches, and relocate the above-ground utilities. And finally, the third site is Pleasant Ridge Road, west of Dolly Road, where we'll do culvert replacement. We're going to reshape and regrade the ditches and relocate the above-ground utilities. So while the design is underway for the culverts with these three projects I just mentioned, the ditch work is going to move forward. So on August 24th, we submitted a joint permit application for all three of the projects. We hope to be notified in October and begin the ditch work by the end of the year. And this slide shows you what the ditch work on these three projects involves. The first one for site number five, the ditch on Dolly Road, between Pleasant Ridge Road and Gumbridge Road, we are clearing the farm ditch to the outfall. That's the picture on the top left. The picture beneath that is the ditch work along Pleasant Ridge Road, west of Dolly Road, where we are regrading the ditches and reestablishing positive drainage. And finally, the ditch work shown on the right photo is the ditch along Gumbridge Road, between Gumbridge Court and Charity Farm Court. We are cleaning out the ditch to remove any blockages and replacing the driveway culverts. And all of this work is being done by an annual service contract with Public Works Operations. On this slide, I wanted to show that we have a spending plan that we have created for the remaining projects in this program. So when we complete these three projects, we have three more projects that are programmed. In addition, we are using some of the funding that we are receiving to help supplement the funding on the off-road ditch program with Public Works Operations. The map you see on the right shows the projects that have been completed, the culverts that have been completed, and they're noted in blue. And then the circles, the red circles represent the projects that are being done now and the three that are in our backlog. So moving on to the Off-Road Ditch Program. As I mentioned, this program is managed by our Public Works Operations Group. It receives $2.27 million per year. Each year, one site is chosen from the northern section of the city, and one site is chosen from the southern section of the city. The zones, as you can see, the map on the right, Zones A through H are in the northern part of the city, and Zones I through P are in the southern part of the city. And you can see the mileage that has been completed in these ditches since FY '15. So now I'm focusing on the Off-Road Ditch Program in the Princess Anne District. As you can see, in the last two years, Public Works Operations has completed over 20 miles of ditch improvements, and almost two miles since July 1st. Now, there's a lot of ditches in the southern part of the city, as you know. In fact, when I totaled up the length of each one of these zones, it's a total of 109 miles of ditches in the southern part of the city. So as you know, the southern part of the city experienced major flooding in July, and again, this past week. The two events were actually very different in that the first event was the southern wind tides with rainfall, whereas the second event was strictly wind-driven tide. So in an attempt to help alleviate some of the wind-driven flooding, we're looking at using some type of backflow preventer to hold back the water in some of the ditches so they don't overflow and flood the streets. So what we did is, this map shows locations of the roads that were closed last week. They're shown in red, and the lines shown in yellow are where we had actual high water, but the streets weren't closed. So we overlaid that map on the Off-Road Ditch Program map, so we could identify areas where we thought these backflow preventer devices may be implemented. So we chose five sites. Those are all shown with the green circles, and we have one off of Charity Neck Road, two are off of Gumbridge Road, and two are off of Nanny's Creek Road. So as I said, we're looking to do a test case with these devices, and hopefully at my next briefing, I'll be able to give you some more information on that. Now I want to show you a couple of slides of some of the completed ditch projects in the southern watershed. The first one is located at 2200 North Stowe Road. You can see the before-construction picture on the left, and the picture during construction at the bottom, and what that ditch looks like today after construction. And the next one is the Community Canal Culvert Improvement Project. This project involved the building 348-inch reinforced concrete pipes, as you can see in the photograph in the after photo. The project cost was approximately, no, it was $164,000. And we were talking earlier that this could possibly be a location for one of these backflow preventer devices. We could actually put it on the culvert here. So staying in the southern watershed, I'm going to move now into some of the roads. We actually, the Transportation Group had a study done to identify the cost and impacts of roadway modifications to reduce flooding at three sites. The three sites that were studied were Punggol Ferry Road, Sand Bridge Road, New Bridge Intersection, and Indian River Road from West Neck to Princess Anne. The first site, Punggol Ferry Road, currently experiences flooding during a 10-year storm, and the study recommends raising the road approximately two feet for a length of 7,300 feet for an estimated cost of $15.1 million. The next site, the Sand Bridge Road, New Bridge Road intersection, this is actually one of the, this intersection is being improved with the Asheville Park project. However, the Asheville Park project is just adding the box culvert. We didn't look at raising the road when we did the box culvert. However, we're going to try to put the projects together. The study recommended raising this intersection one and a half feet for a length of 2,700 feet for an estimated cost of $6.7 million. And the final site that was studied is Indian River Road, as I mentioned, between West Neck and Princess Anne. So this section of road experiences flooding during a 10-year storm, and the roadway actually acts as a weir. It's located within the floodway. So we cannot raise the road and create a fill situation. We actually would need to construct a bridge. That bridge would need to be 2,300 feet long, and it would cost approximately $44.7 million.
Is that a four-lane bridge? I assume if you're building a bridge?
I don't believe so. That's just the two lanes.
That's only the rural area, sir.
Oh, okay.
That's that rural section.
I was just thinking ahead, because you've got urgency data for this stuff.
Okay, moving on to the Stormwater Master Planning Analysis and Modeling Project. You guys are familiar with this project. This is updating the city's stormwater master plans that were prepared in the 1980s. The map you see is the 31 subwatersheds in the city. The colored areas show the areas where we are using the model, we're doing the modeling using software called PC Swim. The areas noted in gray, we are using a modeling software called MIKE. That software, we're using it, as you can see, in the southern part of the city. The software allows for the addition of wind effects to the water bodies so that we can look at how wind tides affect stormwater. The models provide design parameters such as tailwaters that we can provide to developers for their designs. And in addition, the modeling identifies deficiencies in the city's system. So future capital drainage projects will be identified in conjunction with the Sea Level Rise Program. Rise program. Now, we had an RFP out last month to obtain an architectural engineering firm to help us with the master planning phase of this project. The proposals came in last week, and we hope to have the interviews scheduled in November. This slide is the schedule on the watersheds. I actually borrowed this slide right out of Tom Leahy's presentation last week. So there are, as you just saw on the previous slide, there are five main watersheds in the city that contain the 31 drainage basins. So the dates on these slides represent when we have a validated and calibrated model. So for the Lynnhaven Drainage Basins 3 through 8 and 30 are complete. And for the Little Creek Drainage Basins 1 and 31 will be complete by the end of the year. For the Atlantic Ocean Drainage Basin 29 will also be complete by the end of the year. For the Elizabeth River Drainage Basin 2 will be complete by the end of the year, and the rest of the drainage basins will be complete in August of next year. And for the Southern Rivers Drainage Basins 10 and 12 are complete. Drainage Basin 9 will be complete by the end of October. 11, 16, and 23 through 28 will be complete by the end of the year, and the rest of the Southern Basin Drainage Basins 13 through 15 will be done by August of next year. So I added this slide to the presentation this time because you've heard me talk about validated and calibrated models. And the way we do that is by looking at photographs from storms to confirm that the models simulate the flooding that is shown in those photos. So we continually ask the public to provide storm pictures to us. We actually have this on our website. The photos need to include the date and time that the pictures were taken, as well as some sort of benchmark in the photograph that denotes an elevation of the flooding, for example, a mailbox or a top of curb. And we actually, on the website, we say to send the pictures to stormpics@vbgob.com. Hopefully, I'm getting the word out today to have more citizens send us some more photographs. So moving on to southern wind tides. So this map on the left depicts elevations in the southern watershed that are less than three feet and where there is recurrent flooding. The areas, those areas are shown in blue. And the map on the right shows you how the southern watershed is impacted by the winds when they blow out of the south up from Pamlico-Albemarle Sound. So our consultant, who's doing the Sea Level Rise and Recurrent Flooding Study, Duberry, has started to study the southern wind tides for us in order for us to get a better understanding of why they occur, the flooding that occurs with them. So they're using a software called AD-Circ, which stands for Advanced Circulation, in order to model coastal and estuarine waters. And this is a model that is used by FEMA. On this map, the red line is the area that was modeled, and as you can see, we go all the way down to North Carolina. And for the model run, a constant wind was blown across the grid in five directions for 10 days. This map is just showing, as you can see, out of the southwest. So this next table represents the wind blowing from the south for 10 days at different speeds, represented by the colors. So from the model, it shows that it would take four days with a sustained wind blowing from the south at 25 for the water level at Beggar's Bridge to reach three feet. Now, last week, we know it didn't take four days for the water to build up to three feet at Beggar's Bridge. So we are trying to study this event to figure out why the model isn't matching the real-world events. We know that we need to validate and calibrate this model further. But we did receive some information where somebody had mentioned to us that before Hurricane Florence, the National Hurricane Center advisories were actually noting that a larger low-pressure system had set in ahead of Florence and had actually raised the water levels about a foot in the sound. So we are assuming, we haven't validated this, that maybe when we were starting at a higher elevation of a foot, that that made the water come up quicker than our model results are showing.
Does Henry have a question?
Well, you know, the impact with the Albemarle being so full from all of the rivers flowing in there, wouldn't that have caused it to?
That's what we believe. We're trying to get it modeled and validated to make, to have the science behind our assumption.
That's a thousand-year event, too, but it just came up so fast.
It did. It did. And like I said, it didn't match what we had modeled, I meant to draw the lines on there. It didn't match what we had modeled, so now we're going back to try and study this further.
Looking for the sensitive analysis for every millibar, so many millibar drops in barometric pressure.
Oh.
To see how that affects, is that what you're looking to do?
I'm not the scientist, but I would assume that that's going to be part of the study.
That'll be part of it, but we're also looking at the amount of rain we receive over a year. It appears we have, appears we have a series of years where we've been extremely wet. We're asking the question, is there an underlying effort or graph that is keeping the systems up a little bit higher just due to rain and groundwater? So when you get this wind, the wind tide jumps up a little bit quicker.
Water tables apart.
So we're looking at those things and just trying to get a better understanding of the existing conditions and what may impact the sounds to cause that tide to come up.
As far as, will we be looking at, I don't know if you have a sensor at this particular location, but since you're talking about calibrating models and sensors are relatively cheap, are we looking at establishing additional sensor feeds to better calibrate our map model?
Yes, we're asking ourselves, one, about the wind sensing at the Beggar's Bridge, USGS. We're thinking that may be tucked in a little bit and protected, so it may not be catching the accurate wind velocities. So we're going to be looking to see what other locations we may be able to put some sensors out there to get a better feel and understanding of what's going to happen.
But the other thing was, we didn't get any rain.
Right.
I mean, if we had gotten rain, that storm, I just don't even want to think about what that might have been.
Right. And that's why we are using this Mike model in the southern watershed that can simulate that same type of flooding, so we can see what those effects are.
Thinking of everything, but that's hard to do.
Yeah. So this was another slide I thought was interesting. This shows, these are what we call wind roses, and it shows wind direction at Oceana, Fintris, and Manio for a period from 1945 to the present. So if you, as you can see, at Oceana, the winds are predominantly out of the south, southwest. And at Fintris, they're predominantly out of the south, well, north and south, you can see. And then with Manio, they're predominantly out of the south, southwest, and you can see it's this split side, the north, the northeast. So we're just beginning to study this, as I just mentioned, to see if there's possibly a trend that these winds are starting to shift more out of the south. And in addition, as Mark just mentioned, we're also looking at it to see if there's a correlation between accumulating rainfall and the southern wind flooding, the amount of time it takes for the floodwaters to back up. So moving on to Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the lakes. I presented to you last time the concept plan for these projects, where I mentioned that the needed improvements include tide gates, pump stations, additional storage, and increased capacity for the stormwater conveyance system. Right now, we are still showing the total project cost of 129 million. However, I do believe by my next quarterly briefing in December, we're going to have a better defined total project cost, and that number is going to go up to do all of the improvements that are being recommended in the engineering analysis.
Can I have a question?
Yep.
Because I've been out there with a number of people on the other side of where the Thalia Baptist Church is and the billboard and the city's landing on the other side of the boulevard. And you look at that rather constrained movement of water underneath that bridge, I've seen it where the water's up high. When you're looking at that, because sometimes we talk about how water can't get out of the Albemarle Sound because of the narrow inlet, and we don't have that 15-mile wide opening. Well, that, even under a good rain, there's not much rain between the high tide and the top of that part. Ultimately, you're looking at having the pipe extension to pump that water out further so it has a greater dispersal, because under a really big surge in tidal stuff, I don't believe that that system will be able to move. If you have a floodgate there, you'll be able to move that water sufficiently that it doesn't build up, because you're not getting it out where it can disperse. It's just going to pond up on the sides and move down there by the school and by the high school, because that becomes like a barrier, just like the Albemarle Sound has, that very narrow opening, and that's constraining water volume flow.
And you're talking about off of, right next to Princess Anne High School at Virginia Beach Boulevard, right?
And you look at those things, that water can't move through that, underneath that roadway. And that last big flood we had, because of the concrete sides, the water didn't come onto the road. But had it not been for that concrete there, that water would have been coming across that road.
Right.
And that wasn't even a big situation. And I just don't know that this all works. I'm just not sure that you have the ability to push the water like we do at North End out into the Atlantic Ocean. It's nowhere to push it to if you just stop it at the, it just dumps into Thalia Creek. That's my only comment.
So I'll address that really quickly. So this particular project is not going to do anything for that section of the city. However, the stormwater master plan modeling will identify the deficiencies, and that's one of those projects that will come to the top, and we hopefully will be able to create a CIP for it. Okay, so the, oops, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you said December, we should know your thinking a little more about what that actual price is going to be, because you said it was going to go up, and we should know by December.
Yes, in my December quarterly briefing, I should have a better idea of what that price is, because we're going to start needing to program it into next year's CIP.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the third quarter activities for this project include, we continue the design for the early implementation projects. I've briefed you on these before. Clubhouse Road is one of them, and then the three projects we refer to as the FEMA reimbursement projects. As I mentioned, we received the engineering analysis for Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes, and we also received the engineering analysis for Windsor Woods. And we received the final draft of the early implementation projects for the lakes and Princess Anne Plaza. So with our ongoing attendance at the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League monthly meetings, we responded to a lot of their questions, and we actually created a question and answers sheet document for them, which we have posted to the project website. And in addition, we have included it in the project brochure that we hand out at the Civic League and to whoever else would like one of these. On August 1st, we did get the notice of funding opportunity for the FMA grants. The grant applications were due October 12th. We just received notice today after I'd already made the presentation and put the date in here. They've actually extended the deadline to the applications to November. So we're actually way ahead of schedule on these projects, and I'll go into detail on what those two projects are. And as I mentioned, we continually attend the Civic League meeting for Princess Anne Plaza, the lakes, and Windsor Woods. So just to give you an update on the dredging projects, two of the five canal dredging projects are completed. Windsor Woods Canal is still under construction, but should be complete by the end of October. This project is the largest of the canal dredging projects. It is removing approximately 11,000 cubic yards of dredge material. And the next one, North Gate Ditch, this is almost complete and should be done by the end of October. The East Ditch is the longest, this ditch is actually four segments. The East Ditch was the longest one and should be done by the end of October for an estimated cost of $2 million. And finally, Windsor Oaks West 3. This project had some delays because they were waiting on some right-of-entry agreements on three properties. They do expect to start this project at the end of the year and complete construction in September of next year. So the early construction project, Clubhouse Road Drainage Improvement Project, this is one of the projects we are submitting for the FMA grant. The survey and geotech work are now complete. We expect to have the design complete by the end of October and start the golf course construction part in January and start the street construction in November of next year, and have acquisition complete in September of next year. These are the projects that we refer to as the FEMA reimbursement projects. They were the three-pipe projects. The survey is now complete on these projects. Design is in progress. Construction should start on Projects 2 and 3 in January of 2020, and Project 1 in July of 2020.
This is a question I've asked before, but when all these projects are completed, and since we have our model, what is the likelihood or the threshold we have to go over here to see, to use the modeling results and the performance of these areas to maybe get FEMA to readdress how they assess these properties for flood insurance? Because that's a real benefit to those homeowners. I just don't know what that way ahead is, but let me know how I can help.
Okay.
There is a process, it's really rigorous, but there is a process. But I hope with our good model, we could be equally rigorous.
And I think with the construction, Mr. Moss, our CRS, you know, we gave you a notice in your packet just the other week that we think we're coming online at, you know, two notches down, and that's a good thing. And you put these projects on, and you validate your model, and they come out and see a couple of results, and our scientists are able to prove, you know, it makes a difference. And these are huge muscle moves that help reduce, not just for that neighborhood, because they'll have the direct impact, but it also helps the whole city.
Thank you very much.
Community grading system, just talking about.
Yes, yes.
So this is the map of the preliminary concept plan that I included in my previous briefing. So the recommendations in the engineering analysis included the construction of a barrier or a gate to block the incoming tide from Thalia Creek, London Bridge Creek, and West Neck Creek. We need to construct stormwater pumping stations, one at Lake Windsor and another one along London Bridge Creek. We need additional lake storage capacity at Windsor Woods and Lake Windsor, and we need additional storage lakes in the Princess Anne Plaza area. And finally, we need to increase the stormwater conveyance capacity in all of the neighborhoods. So here's kind of a summary of the draft engineering analysis for Windsor Woods. I just discussed some of those. This goes into more detail, where we're going to need to build a 750 CFS pump station adjacent to Lake Windsor. This is larger than any pump station the city currently has. And we need to increase stormwater conveyance capacity by adding 29,000 feet of new stormwater pipes.
May I ask a question? You said the 750 CFS was larger than what the city currently has. What is a typical size?
Well, the Rosemont Forest Pump Station is a 75 CFS pump station, so.
Okay.
You could throw out, the largest we have is 42nd Street, which is 440 CFS.
Yeah, that's about 42nd.
Not quite double, okay, thank you.
It's a monster.
I'm figuring that out.
For us, you saw Tom's report on New Orleans and, you know, what do they build, 12,000?
It looks like there's a bigger one that's coming up on this slide.
Here's slide number two.
All right.
So for the lakes and Princess Anne Plaza, we need to construct tide gates and berms on London Bridge Creek on the north and the south to block the incoming tides. We need to perform interim pumping until the permanent pump station is constructed. And we need to construct storage in this, these neighborhoods. The one thing that's different about the Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes side of Rosemont Road, there's currently no storage available. There are no lakes, ponds, BNP's in that area. On the other side, in Windsor Woods, they have Lake Windsor and Lake Trashmore that we can use for storage. So one of the things we need to do is create storage in Princess Anne Plaza and lakes. And in order to do that... and in order to do that, we're actually working with Parks and Rec and developing some concepts to convert the Bow Creek Golf Course into a stormwater retention pond.
A series of ponds.
A series of ponds. And in addition, talking about the pump station, so, uh, the originate, uh, original concept plan was actually showing a pump station on the north side of London Bridge Creek and the south side, but they came back and said if we, um, if we built a large pump station in the order of fourteen hundred CFS, uh, then we could eliminate, uh, the second pump station. And just like Windsor Woods, we need to increase the stormwater conveyance capacity by adding twenty-six thousand feet of new stormwater pipes.
These are big pipes.
These, big pipes. And, and while we're, and while we're in the neighborhood, um, tearing up the streets to put in these stormwater pipes, we are gonna be replacing the water and sewer. So, this, um, the Thalia Creek Tide Gate, I did mention that we need to, um, we need to hold back the tide from Thalia Creek from coming into Lake Windsor. Um, so this is a critical infrastructure component for this program. Um, so, uh, this, um, gate will be approximately sixty feet wide across Thalia Creek, and it's estimated to cost $5 million. And this is, uh, one of the projects we have, the second project we are submitting for the FMA grant. And we actually have a rendition of the tide gate. So, this is what it will look like, um, and it will be located just south of South Boulevard and to the immediate east of Trashmore Park. So, uh, I wanna kind of go over, um, why we need the tide gate. So, the red arrow is the incoming tide, and the blue arrows are the stormwater runoff or, or rain. So, the incoming tide and the stormwater flows compete for storage in Lake Windsor. So, by, uh, adding a tide gate, uh, we're able to block off the tide and thereby, uh, have additional storage in Lake Windsor for the stormwater. So, we actually created some, um, slides to, to demonstrate that further. Uh, this slide shows the elevation at low tide in the green, and as you can see, when, um, if Lake Windsor's at low tide, we have that additional storage capacity for rain water. But if the lake, uh, is at high tide and we have a rain event, then the storage capacity would be exceeded. We would overflow the, um, Lake Windsor. So, the, the idea is to add a tide gate, so when the tide gate is closed, the incoming tide is blocked, and therefore, the storage capacity is available for the additional stormwater. And that's shown here in the blue. So, as I mentioned, we are going to need to have interim pumping, uh, while the permanent pump stations are being constructed. This is a picture of what those would look like. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Wood?
So, can you go back to the tide gate one? To the, um, the.
I'll get there.
Plan, the aerial or whatever. Right there.
This one?
Yeah, so, if you put a tide gate in, what is the impact on the tide being blocked on the other side? I mean, is there, do you have to increase capacity on the backside of the gate, or?
No, that's all been modeled, so, so the tide gate would be open during normal conditions. It would only be closed when we needed the additional storage in Lake Windsor.
Okay, so, but, but what I'm saying is if there's a storm pushing a tide in at the same time, so, so you, you, what I'm saying is if you have like two, two conflicting issues, heavy rainfall and then, then a wind-driven tide, or, or something like that, or lunar tide, or anything like that, I mean, is it, how does that work then?
Well, that's when we would need the pump, so we would have to close.
Evolves a pump as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is.
You asked about flooding on the other side?
Oh, the, on the backside of it, yeah.
Yeah, I think what he's referring is, as, because you could have put that gate on the other side of the interstate and just blocked the pipe, so it can't come under the pipe if we wanted to. That would have been one choice on the west side of the interstate.
I believe they looked at that.
All those culverts, you could, you could put a gate and just close them at that point. You could. We chose to come down the ways. I'm sure there's a hydrodynamic reason for that. Uh, and I see the logic of it, but he's referring to, as you do that, and that water doesn't come and spread out at another location, which we don't want to have happen, it's rising up on the other side, but I'm sure that's why I saw those banks and the billboards and all those places in the dock flooded, if you would do that, when all that would flood, I assume in your models.
Yeah, Mike's gonna answer that one.
It gets complicated, but, but tide, water wants to stay balanced, and so when the tide dries and the water wants to come through the west or come through the Lynnhaven and get itself balanced. So, if we block it, we're just stopping that tide from going any further, but it's not gonna cause a backup, because the water's just trying to be balanced. It's not like, it's not like a slug of water just trying to run down, it's just a slug of water trying to stay balanced.
But we'll spread out.
That's a really good.
Because it is something that everybody fears, and, and we, we get into this discussion a lot when we put the gates up at, at Cape Shore by the sea, we did that also to explain to everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, Shannon.
Pocahontas Village on the other side of the interstate, where, what flows into that? Where, where's that? You know, they're behind, uh, Best Buy. What does that flow into?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have to.
Uh, we had a Pocahontas Village drainage project several years back, and, uh, we increased, increased some pipes, and we increased the size of the ditch that runs along the Norfolk Southern Railroad right of way. And it runs along, and then it cuts back around now, uh, 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 Wings, Buffalo Wild Wings. Backs around there, goes underneath Independence Boulevard, through two box culverts, and then wraps around, uh, and goes through that wetland area that's right next to McDonald's, and it eventually flows into Thalia Creek, is where it goes.
Is there a project coming up for that area? I'm, I'm getting, um, a person that's, that's contacting me frequently about that.
We'll be glad to talk to them, but I will tell you, we, we really enlarged that ditch. It's almost canal-like, and, uh, we armored the banks of that, so it can handle a lot of, a lot of flow. Uh, if you give me the person, we can talk to him, but, uh, we've done a pretty good job for Pocahontas Village. Uh, if anything's going on, it could be a maintenance-related issue.
I'll get with you after this, then.
Glad to.
Barbara, do you have something?
Right, back on Sherwood Lakes, uh, the fact that you all pump at some points, and of course, the pumping has been getting folks' concerns, uh, that water, when you pump it out of Sherwood Lakes, goes, has to go under, uh, Seaboard Road to get over to West Net Creek. Was there flooding? I know that there was some flooding on Seaboard Road, and the perception to people was that it was because of the pumping. Was it, or did you all observe any?
No, we had actually pumped before, um, the, the southern, the southern flooding that occurred last week, we had pumped down that lake previously, so we had, we weren't doing any pumping when the water was high.
Did you all observe at the place where it does have to go under Sherwood Lakes? Is there buildup, I mean, under the, uh, Seaboard Road, is there any buildup or anything in there that, because I know.
We, we've studied the outfall to handle the, the pumping from Sherwood Lakes, so do you have a question?
I drove through there two days ago. I, I didn't see anything, any blockages, but we'll have somebody check and see, and I don't think we got any, any reports of any flooding at that culvert.
Okay, I just want, well, I just want to say how much I appreciate that you added these additional pages about the ditches, I guess, from what we had gotten over the weekend, and this looks really good, uh, and I appreciate all that you all are doing to, uh, combine the, the maintenance with the, for the ditch maintenance with the CIP projects, because that's, you know, really critical and important for folks to know. And, and I appreciate also that, you know, you're setting up this meeting, uh, October fourth.
Yes.
Down at Creed's to, uh, give some of this information to the community, because everybody has just been hit so much this, this year. We had it in May, we had it in July, and we had it again at last week. Uh, and it's, it's, it's just really important that the, uh, folks down there know all of the work that you're doing, know the level of the, the data that you're collecting, and have an opportunity to give feedback, and so I really appreciate it, but we do have this meeting set up in a couple of weeks, and, uh.
I think we're calling it the Wind Forum.
I think that would be, uh, very good, and it's, uh, it, it's just so hard for folks to understand, you know, how we could have a flood like we did last week with no rain and sunshine, and it's, it's just a, an anomaly that happens.
Yes.
And, and it's happened too many times lately, but I really appreciate all the work that you all have done, and thank you a lot. And I also appreciate the work that I got, the report I got just before I came in here from the, um, um, what the fire department has done in trying to identify any of the houses that had any water in them or any damage, and we just want people to know if they haven't been contacted and they did have damage, that they can let us know, and so we can keep track of what, what has occurred. And I, I really appreciate that level of work.
Yes, John.
Line twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
My question is just relative to the picture. Is that considered normal water level at that location? Is that higher than lower? I just, I made a little circle note to say, what's the normal condition, so that is?
I asked the same question. They said that's the normal water level.
Yeah, it's normal water.
So, that tells you how much capacity is left in that, to move water through in that pipe. Okay, just wanna make sure, I just wanna understand if that wasn't the unusual condition. Thank you, that was my only question, appreciate it.
Well, that one is a success story. I mean, that has worked, so you all did that last January, I think, did the work, and it's really, really worked well all year. I think they did have finally some, um, water last week when the wind tides went up so far, but earlier in the year with the rains and so forth, I just kept getting feedback that everything was really working well.
But my question was, like, because I, I figured that when you do your model and you put new stuff in, you know the amount that steady state capacity and what really is the surge volume that you have, and that's all your modeling is just.
Correct, correct. We, 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 uh, we know how much of the, the pipe we, we'll already have water in it, so we size the pipe, we upsize the pipe, so we have, uh, some flood, floodway in the pipe.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Really feel that we're starting to get somewhere, you know?
Just have time to get the design.
Yeah, and we're really making some progress.
You don't wanna convey it all, you wanna hold some of it in storage.
Notice to proceed, a lot of those coming out, so that's.
All right, next item is planning items.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna get the presentation poll up here in just a second. Uh, just to let you know, we have eleven planning items that are scheduled for your October sixteenth, uh, city council hearing, including a rezoning, a subdivision variance, and a variety of conditional use permits. We're running the gamut this time. We've got in-home daycares, marinas, indoor batting cages, and miniature golf courses, so strap up and be ready to go. And then, finally, we have an update of the Burton Station SGA plan. So, item number one is a request for a bulk storage yard that exists to the east of the large Haynes Furniture Store along Virginia Beach Boulevard. The property owner recently bought the property, and he, uh, and neither did the operator know that there was a need for a conditional use permit to operate this storage yard. So, this application is to correct that oversight. The applic- the applicant operates twenty-four hour towing business. The storage yard is required to have category six land, uh, screening, which includes a solid six-foot fence and evergreen plants that currently, uh, that is currently lacking on the site. Uh, the plan commission recommends a condition that a solid fence be installed immediately along the western property line that they share with Haynes Furniture, and that the existing chain link fence, uh, be allowed to remain until the properties to the north and the east are developed, at which time they would be replaced with a solid fence and the required landscape material. Uh, the applicant has indicated desire to simply install a solid six-foot fence around the entire storage area, so you may hear from them in the near future when this is heard. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Next item is a modification to the conditional use permit for a commercial arena at the southwest intersection of Shore Drive and Vista Circle. Uh, this request includes the additions to the existing boat docks, as well as the installation of two boat lifts and a boat ramp. Uh, there was one letter of opposition from a nearby resident who noted concerns about increased traffic. However, the capacity of the restaurant will not change with this request, and no improvements to the building or the parking are proposed. In fact, the additions to the proposed docks will actually increase the boater capacity on the site and may reduce the number of vehicular trips to the site, at least during the warmer months. Item number three is a request for an in-home daycare for up to twelve children in the Alexandria neighborhood in the Centerville District. Uh, there is a large backyard for outdoor play and a two-car driveway for client drop-off and pickup. Uh, the new next-door neighbor who recently moved in appeared in opposition to the daycare at the plan commission hearing. They noted concerns about the potential for increased traffic and in the neighborhood. The staff and plan commission do recommend a condition that requires drop-off and pickup times, uh, of children be staggered. Uh, this is a typical condition that we put on most in-home daycares, and staff has not had any complaints in regarding this approach, and staff, uh, plan commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval.
Can we get a forbade on the neighbor's testimony, please?
Absolutely, we'll include that with the package. Item number four is a conditional use permit for a residential kennel along Indian River Road in the Princess Anne District. The applicant has six rescue dogs and was unaware of the need for the conditional use permit, so this application is to correct that oversight. Uh, the dogs are pets and are kept indoors the majority of the time. The kennels that exist on the site are within the eastern side of the property setback, so the applicant is requesting a deviation so that they can remain. One letter of opposition was submitted by the property owner to the west who recently purchased that property who noted concerns with potential noise. Based on this, the plan commission added a condition that dogs be kept indoors between the hours of ten PM and seven AM, except, of course, to do, for exercising to do their business in the evening. Plan commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, subject to the conditions. All right, so this is the second conditional use permit for an in-home daycare for up to twelve children. This property is located within the Salem Woods neighborhood, uh, in the Rose Hall District. There's sufficient area in the fenced-in rear yard for outdoor play and a driveway to help accommodate client parking. Staff did receive two letters in opposition who noted concerns related to traffic and a business use in the neighborhood. Staff also received two letters of support from both adjacent property owners. Plan commission voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Do we know where the opposition lives, that, that, in proximity?
We don't have the graphic up here right now, but we can provide a graphic to you that will show you where the, the letters were received from. We'd be glad to provide that.
Do you have that on all of them?
Absolutely.
That's a street over for me, so I'm just trying to figure out where.
We can provide that information.
Thank you.
Item number six is a request for a conditional use permit for an indoor batting cage in the Fairfield Shopping Center in the Kempstall District. The eighteen thousand square foot facility will provide baseball and softball instruction and batting ca- and pitching cages and a small amount of retail. The plan commission viewed this as a great reuse of a large portion of the shopping center, and we are unaware of any opposition.
You didn't get anybody, uh, planning against this?
No, ma'am. None at all. Item number seven is a conditional rezoning of approximately fifty-five thousand square feet from an agricultural to residential and a modification of proffers in order to create three lots and incorporate them into the Princess Anne Meadows neighborhood that is currently under construction. The three lots proposed, as well as three quarters of an acre of open space, will be added to the neighborhood. Uh, the architectural style of the homes will mimic that, that were proffered in two thousand sixteen. Stormwater management is sufficient, and the addition of these units is consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, and staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Item number eight is a conditional use permit for an eighteen-hole mini golf course on Anderson's Garden Center property along Sandbridge Road. The putting and walkways are, putting areas and walkways are proposed to be constructed with a permeable surface to aid with stormwater infiltration, and this will provide additional recreational opportunity for residents and visitors to Sandbridge. And again, we are unaware of any opposition to this request. And our final in-do, in-home daycare for this time, again, we're going back to the Salem Woods area in Rose Hall, and this request is for up to twelve children as well. There's sufficient area in the fenced-in rear yard for outdoor play, and again, a driveway to help accommodate dri- uh, client parking. There was one letter of opposition from a resident who lives several blocks away who noted concerns related to traffic and business use in the neighborhood, and there were four letters of support from nearby property owners. The plan commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, and we'd be glad to provide those letters, and I'm apt to show where those were at as well. Item number ten, this is a subdivision, uh, variance request for a site that was created by Deed in nineteen fifty-seven. At that time, in order to legally establish a parcel, a plat had to be record, put to record. Following the Deed recordation, a single-family home was developed on the site. The new property owner was made of this, oh, made aware of this oversight and would like to correct this, so in order to create, legally create this parcel, a subdivision variance to both lot width and lot area is required. The minimum lot width is a hundred and fifty feet, and only ninety-nine feet is proposed. Likewise, the minimum lot area is one acre and only thirty-nine. Likewise, the minimum lot area is one acre and only 32,000 square feet is proposed. We see these types of situations from time to time in the rural part of the county, of city of Virginia Beach, and often in the, near the oceanfront, so this is not uncommon. As there is a dwelling on the site, we really see this as a housekeeping issue, and staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. And finally, item number 11 is the final item for the 16th, which is the Burton Station Plan Update that replaces the original 2009 document. Several highlights of the plan include the land use recommendation for Burton Station Village area has changed from single-family dwellings to mixed use. The plan reflects the commercial use for the Burton Crossings development, which was approved by city council earlier this year. Mark Shea, who presented to you on the progress of the plan on several occasions, is here to answer any of your questions. He and his team have conducted extensive public outreach efforts to the community, which has supported the updates. And a copy of the plan will be provided for your review in an upcoming Friday package. And that's what we have for you today.
Thank you very much. Ms. Henley, did you have something?
Yes, I just have some comments about the proposed additions to our legislative package. I'll just say I was very surprised and terribly disappointed when I discovered in the city attorney's packet that we had these proposals for three additions to our legislative package. Two of them will involve changes to our city charter, and one of them is a request to change the state constitution. We've got a process for developing our legislative package, and we've been involved with that process for the past several weeks. We actually had the public comment on that last week. And to see these major changes slipped in with no discussion here at city council, no discussion with the public, is anything but transparent. Issues of this magnitude of these three changes are things that need much more than just a for fun for a public hearing. The last time, one of these, of course, would be a change to, a request to change to the ward system. The last time we considered a change to the ward system, we had a referendum. And the people voted two to one to keep our at-large voting system. This action, which subverts our whole process for developing our legislative package, to me is just showing a lack of respect to the council as well as to the public. And I just, I just don't think that this is something that we should do. And so I would have just asked Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott if you would consider withdrawing these requests so that they can be resubmitted at some time in the future when they can actually go through the process that we have established.
Well, for my request, I mentioned it at the last meeting and discussed it and said I would fact, would be preparing legislation. It would have to be advertised. You can watch the videotape, and you can hear my remarks. So with regards to the bonded debt, no, I will not withdraw it. I did mention it. No one chose to comment on it. I did discuss it and said I would be proposing it, would be included, and would be advertised.
Yeah, I think you said that as you were on the way out of the door.
No, ma'am, at this table, turn the tape on.
Well, okay, but I certainly didn't hear anything about these other two.
Well, I can't speak to the constitutional amendment, I don't know what that is.
All right, hold on, hold on, one at a time. Ben?
I'd like to second Barbara's comments. I think that's subverting, you know, what we do here at council. And I think that we should, you know, work within the policies that we've established here.
I got legislators.
Well, I'm not talking about yours specifically.
Oh, Jessica?
I'll speak to the one, the, as far as the process goes. This is my second year here, so I'm not entirely familiar with the way that we submit our packages. As far as the ward voting, we have, I have been requested by many, many organizations to submit that to the packet. If we need to defer it a little bit for more public comment, I'm open to that. I don't think there's a reason to withdraw it, but if we want to vote on it separately at a later time, I don't really see the problem in doing that either. So in regards to the amendment to the constitution, you know, well, actually, let me back up. As far as the last vote, it was 1996 was the last time we had a referendum. And I'm all for a referendum. If we want to add that to the next election cycle to see what people think about it, that's fine with me. But 1996, I was seven years old. So to say that, that that is relevant, you know, I think is a little insulting to the public, especially considering that there has been legal action against the city of Virginia Beach to try to go to a ward system. And I will also notate that we are one of, I can't find any other municipality that follows that process. We do, we, we are a exception to a rule in regards to ward voting. The term limits, you know, that's something I've heard from the public constantly. Again, I was asked to submit it, and I was happy to do so. And then the last one was the one on flooding, that we had a public speaker come to our meeting and request that we include that in the packet. So that was why that was included.
All right, anybody else? If not?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes.
I want to say something about something else.
All right.
Well, so this has already been advertised. I mean, it's advertised to be on our agenda next week. Like I say, I don't think, I thought everybody pretty well knew our process for determining our legislative package. We started this several weeks ago. We've been having these comments, like if you've got anything else that needs to come in. And we had the public hearing last week. Clearly, things of this magnitude, as in the past, we've had a referendum if we want to make major changes to our charter and so forth, or certainly some major discussions from the public than just putting them in on a, a public hearing that hasn't even been discussed here around this table. And I just think we owe the public more respect than to try to totally change our processes in this fashion. And I, I would just, I think it would be the right thing to do to just say, let's go with our process and not look like we're trying to short-circuit the process and the, and the opportunity for the public to really understand what we're doing. I just.
Well, my amendment does with how we're circumventing our charter to issue debt via the Development Authority without a referendum. So hopefully, people will be very interested that the charter amendment itself is protecting the integrity of the charter itself.
All right, Rosemary?
First of all, I do, I agree with Barbara and Ben. And are we supposed to be voting on this next week?
You will vote on the legislative agenda next week. What you determine to include within it will be up to the council.
Can we, I mean, Shannon and I have the Virginia Municipal League next week.
How many votes do we have?
And maybe say our way, we can push this off until the following. Ten more weeks is going to matter.
It's the will of the body.
You've got two people that aren't going to be here next week.
Well, what do you want to do? You want to put it off?
I think we just need to have a vote to defer it's been advertised. That's all I think. I'm happy to support a vote to defer, but I think we should vote to defer.
I mean, we've had this planned. This isn't something that just popped up. I mean, she's on the executive board and I'm.
Do we need a, we don't need a super majority?
We'll put it on the agenda for a deferral.
I don't mind deferring, I just think we need to vote.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is, I really think we need to go ahead and approve the process, I think it's the one that Ben proposed, for the overlay districts. If people want to get prepared for Planning Commission, they need to be able to get started and be able to get their signatures and have our public hearings and all of that sort of thing. So I'd like for us to move on that as well.
Do you have, do you have an item you're going to?
Yes, and Mark, they've already had it drawn up.
Okay.
And Mark, if you could send that out to everyone?
Are we talking about the city council policy?
Yeah, the policy for.
Wait on the planning commission?
I thought we had a pretty clear direction.
Okay, well, you're going to have a real problem when you pass the whole citywide thing.
Well, we haven't passed anything. We haven't passed anything.
But it's going to go to planning. And if it comes back to us and we have to pass it and they, Sandbridge.
We don't have to pass anything.
Okay, well.
But I think that we have a pretty clear direction on which way we were going to. I thought that was the understanding of the body, is that we had a pretty clear direction.
The question that's before.
But also, Sandbridge is really concerned that they need to know for their, for their rental time for next year, their planning time, that if we drag our feet, it's really disturbing their, their business plans. So they would really like us to at least have them be able to start their process.
Well, once it comes back from the Planning Commission, we'll know what they're recommending. And if you want to do your overlay thing at that time, it seems to me like it would be appropriate at that time. Jim?
When is it coming back from planning? When do we anticipate that? Does any?
It would go in November, but there is no timing on that.
So it's going to be after the first of the year?
Correct.
So then the impact on Sandbridge?
Be significant.
But we, but the overlay district policy doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission.
Oh.
We can adopt that at any point. We can adopt it at the same time that we are considering whatever we get back from the Planning Commission.
But they want to be able to prepare for it as well, so, because there's steps that they have to take.
They would have to go through the process of applying to be in an overlay district.
Correct.
Mark, you got a comment on that?
The city council policy creates additional steps in the process for the creation of an overlay district. Unless and until the policy is adopted, the fact of the matter is that any member of council could come forward with a proposal to create an overlay. My office would be required to draft it and deliver it, and you all would take it up. So it's however you want to do it. But yes, that, the, the, the process does not have to go to the Planning Commission. That policy you gave me clear direction on, and I drafted what I think you told me to draft, although I have heard from individual members of the body that they would like some changes to the thresholds. But I can have that turned around whenever this body tells me it wants it. I'm just following directions on that.
Well, I think what's, what, Rose, correct me if I'm mistaken. Rosemary wants to be able to move on the overlay district issue as soon as possible, right?
To pass the policy so the people that want an overlay district can do what they need to do. And perhaps it can be synchronized with what goes before the Planning Commission.
I don't know that I see anything wrong with that, but.
That's, that's what people are asking for. Because it's, because, as is pointed out, this could be next spring, and all of a sudden we change the rules on them, and they've got rentals in place, and it's, it could be very problematic.
All right, so when do you want to bring it forth?
Well, Shannon and I'll be back on the second voting meeting next, this, in October.
All right, we just need to get with Mark then.
Yeah, well, I've asked Mark to send out what he's written up.
Not just us, I mean, post it for the public.
Yeah, the public needs to be able to see it, too.
Yeah, this is the process that Ben recommended.
Excuse me?
This is the process that you recommended.
I think this is a process that all of us agreed to.
Yeah, but you, but you brought it up with the signatures and all of that, so.
Actually, I didn't bring up the signatures part. I brought up the, anyway, let's do, let's do what Rosemary wants.
I like that.
So, so I will put another copy of the draft policy in the public package this Friday. Am I to do something else besides that with it?
Ask Rosemary.
Well, I think it all needs to be, you know, if there's any changes, you need to hear what changes people want to that policy.
I thought we had a clear direction.
I thought we should post on the web if we're getting it.
I thought we had a very clear direction. I don't know what we're.
We've got to have public comment on it.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. I mean, when are we going to do public comment?
Because.
Well, what do you want to do?
There are more neighborhoods involved in this.
Exactly what we proposed to do the last time, and we all agreed on.
But there are certainly more, more neighborhoods besides Sandbridge that want to comment on the overlay proposal.
But this isn't, this is the process of doing the overlay proposals. It's, it's our process.
Were you here the last couple of meetings? I mean, were you here when we voted on? I mean, you don't remember what we decided on?
Well, tell me then. I thought we were going to, that everybody can hear it.
I thought we all agreed that we were going to send it back to planning, give it a baseline, allow planning to go over the recommendations. We were going to have public comment on it, and then we were going to take action on it at some point. I thought that's what everybody in this room agreed to.
That's for the overall city thing. I'm talking about the process if somebody wants to be in an overlay district.
That's what I was referring to. Maybe, maybe I'm the one that doesn't understand.
Don't we have to adopt the ordinance that establishes short-term rentals in the city before we can create an overlay district? I mean, we can't create an overlay district to allow short-term rentals until our ordinance allows short-term rentals.
Well, but.
Don't we?
Go ahead, Jen.
Just to be a devil's advocate here, is this to create an overlay district for any purpose or just for short-term rentals?
Short-term rentals. The council said we want all short-term rental overlay districts to be citizen-initiated rather than coming from staff or coming from this body unadorned. And so, again, what this policy actually does is create additional steps for the creation of an overlay district that otherwise wouldn't apply. So if you want, I mean.
That's the way I understand it, Mr. Mayor, if I could. So it would seem to me that, that having a policy in place is not a bad thing because it's going to take a long time for anybody in Sandbridge or whoever to, to get involved or to do this. I mean, we know this from people, the citizen-initiated dredging projects that take months and months and months, if not years.
Years.
To, to, to get signatures and that sort of thing.
Permits.
I don't see the harm in creating a policy because it's not going to be implemented until there is actual ordinance in place. So it would seem to me it's just one piece of the puzzle. I don't think it hurts unless, unless we're talking about not doing overlay districts at all, which kind of goes contrary to, as Ben said, what we originally said. So, I mean, I don't see an issue with it either way.
So it's just laying out the process, it's the policy of laying out the process of how a neighborhood would get to that point.
It would tell neighborhoods that if you adopt an ordinance that permits overlays, what they would have to do to initiate the process. But you probably wouldn't, you know, you probably wouldn't go have your public hearing until you had adopted the ordinance.
I don't know how you could initiate the process without an ordinance.
Would they, would they like go and get their petitions then, ahead of us adopting anything? Because how can somebody sign a petition without understanding what, what the ordinance is?
Well, so the functional, the functional reality is though, if, let's say this thing comes back in January. It comes back, well, it's not going to come back in January, let's say it comes back in, in March, okay? And the council votes on it in April. You know, I mean, I'm just saying, we know how this is going. There's nothing short about short-term rentals. And as, as, as you move, as we move forward then, so then, let's say it's March of 2019, and then we say, okay, well, now this is the, this is the way that we're going to implement the, the overlay district. What do we do with that delta of time between when it's adopted and between anybody can really realistically get this process moving, that they do not know what the process is?
Well, another way you could potentially deal with that would be a delayed effective date.
Well, that's, that's where we end up being, which, which ultimately is, is kind of what we're doing now by default. I mean, I, and I have to share with, just what everybody else says. You know, I've heard a lot of comments about this. People have, I had an electrician ask me today, what is going on with this? You know, I'm involved building houses in Sandbridge, things like that. That's what he told me. And he said, everybody down there is asking me what the heck is going on. I said, well, it's moving. But, and that's all I can really tell. But people are asking this all over the place. I heard it Sunday at an event, I heard it Saturday at an event. I mean, every place I go now, I'm hearing questions about this. And we, we, we need to move it forward. And I don't, I agree with Rosemary. I don't see an issue, I don't see an issue with, with creating a process and letting the public know what the process is going to be at a date, at a future date certain. But, I mean, that's my opinion. I don't think it hurts us at all.
The ordinance, the process won't be completed.
It, it, it won't take effect unless and until there's an ordinance. But at least they're going to know that this is the process. they're, they're going to know that this is the process. And I don't think it's...
Now, is that true, Mark?
Is what true, sir?
That it won't take effect until we have an ordinance?
Well, there will be no overlay district to create until you pass the ordinance. Could you start the preliminary process? You could, but you're encouraging people potentially to waste time and effort and money in the event that you don't ultimately pass the ordinance. So, you know, there are, I could, I could argue it either way, but you certainly can pass the ordinance on any meeting Tuesday that you, or the, the policy. Remember, this isn't a law, this is a policy. You could pass the policy on October the 2nd, you could rescind the policy on October 16th, you could change the policy on November 4th. I mean, this is not, this is not a law. This is your city council policy.
November 6th.
This is you all, no, you can't do it on November 6th, I don't think.
I know that day.
But, 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 but you can, this is just a compact between all of you as to what the process is going to be, if you're going to consider the creation of a short-term rental overlay district, if and when that comes back from the Planning Commission and you all adopt it. If you don't pass it, then it'll be like any other overlay that was ever created. A council member can sponsor it. It could come through, through a request to staff, you know. All I'm telling you is, this, this policy is, is something that, there's no magic to it. You can do it whenever you want. You can do it, you know, you probably, I mean, I, because this issue is so touchy, you probably do want to get public input on it. But this is really sort of the tail wagging the dog, to be honest with you, because you could, someone who wants an overlay could start the process the minute the, the council adopts the ordinance, and they could be preparing in advance. But you had a policy that you wanted, it's available for you. I, I don't think there's any legal impediment to you voting on it as soon as you're all agreed on it, if that's what you want to do.
People, they just really feel like they're in limbo. This thing has just been hanging out there, and they'd like to know what their process is and if they can start working on it, and they can, and with the effect that there's, there's no guarantee, because everything has to go through Planning.
That would be, that would be more assuring is, if we know we, this thing isn't coming until January and they're doing things, is to just tell people our policy is that the effective date of whatever we adopt, because how late it's coming, won't be effective until whatever the next season starts. That's the most assurance.
Pretty easy.
But how do you legally do that, though?
You can have, you can have a delayed effective date. You've done it before.
But on what? I mean, we don't have anything really to...
Have a delayed effective date. I'm just saying, if people are looking for assurance, since you're going to change a policy this way, all we can tell people by a resolution, it's our intent, that if and when we are to adopt something, the effective date would be after their season was over. People looking...
So that you wouldn't interfere with people's summer rental plans.
So if they're looking for assurance, I'm just saying, how do you offer people the confidence that they're looking for and preserve our flexibility to act in the public's interest? That might be why.
That could very well be part of the recommendation that comes back from the Planning Commission, that you do this, but you do it with a delayed effective date. Or whether it's not, it's a recommendation, you, you always, I mean, that's not a substantive change that you couldn't add yourself when it comes back before you. That, that's just another option.
Well, I was just, I'm just sitting here thinking, and that is, if the overlay policy is in place, then when the people do come before the Planning Commission as well as the City Council and make their comments about the proposed ordinance, they will have the knowledge already that overlay districts are, will be available in the event the ordinance has passed, and they can take that into consideration as they make their comments before the council. I'm kind of like Jim, I don't think it matters which time you do it, before or after the ordinance has passed. It doesn't seem to be harmful to me, to be honest with you. It's just whether you want to have it...
The one thing I have concern with is, I mean, I don't know that we're ready to pass a policy until we have public comment. I mean, there's a lot of things to...
Well, we've got to have...
The number of signatures? I mean, are we stuck on this?
We're going to have to have a hearing on it. We can't just go ahead and do it. I mean, we can, I guess, but I'm not sure we should. I mean, if we're, it's going to have to go on the agenda, and it's going to have to be available for public comment, that's all.
So why don't we hear it second voting meeting, and then the first voting meeting in November, try to vote on it then?
I'm fine.
That gives you a lot of time.
I'm not sure. I think it makes any difference, to tell you the truth, but...
That's the whole point. It really doesn't make any difference. So why are we changing it?
Correct.
That's...
People would like for it to be.
Well, do you want to take it upon yourself to put it on, or do you want to get a feel from the council here whether to do it or not?
Well, let's get a feel for the council, then.
Okay. Shannon?
Why, you always start with me.
Because he's right-handed.
Is that what it is? I feel like Ben, that we put a, we put a plan into place and we should stick with it. And I think that as far as planning is concerned, if we don't know anything till January, February, March anyways, we, we just grandfathered them in, for lack of a better word, and, and their rentals aren't hindered next summer.
You mean defer, you defer the effective date?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay.
So are you saying do it, or are you saying not do it?
No, I'm saying let's just stick with our original plan.
You're saying no.
So you're saying no for now?
For now.
Okay. John?
I, until we have the policy of exactly what the ordinance is going to look like, I don't know how it is that you do the overlay with it, so. But I, to Rosemary's point, to, you know, I think that we should publicly state that, you know, we are not going, it's not our intent to take action that is going to hinder their current rental opportunities. And, because I can understand, I can certainly understand that.
This is just a process.
But I, but you can't start the process to even get the overlay until the other ordinance gets passed. So even if we set the policy, and then they wanted to do an application, they couldn't put in an application to get approved prior to us approving the original ordinance. So I think really, but I think it's a good discussion, but I think it's important that we just give everybody the certainty that, that it's not our intent to, to act on something that would impact their ability to rent for that season. But I, I don't, I don't really even, I mean, as a practical matter, if we set up that process for an overlay, how do you get an overlay for an ordinance that doesn't even exist? I mean, I don't even know how you would go through and do the application.
That's my concern.
Well, this is really good discussion, because we really never discussed postponing effective dates.
Right.
And I think if we have that coming out of this discussion, I think it's a, it's a win-win.
Yeah. I mean, I, I can see how you'd have some angst if it, if it slips to...
There's a lot of angst out there, and they want to get started and get moving, but if we're going to post, because they don't want their season messed up next year.
All right, do you want to put it on or not?
Well, my sense is don't put it on, just give them, give everyone the, the sense that we're not going to do something that's going to be active immediately and not give them the opportunity to have the time period between when we approve it and it gets enacted.
Can I make a suggestion before we go all the way around the table?
Sure.
What if we did, did the suggestion that, I think, I don't know, I heard from somewhere, about doing a resolution, a formal resolution, that says that nothing's going to take effect until, you know, October of whatever year it passes? And then that way, that way, people will know. I mean, I think that way it gets them out of the season. Otherwise, otherwise, I think we're going to be stuck providing some things, some sort of semblance. I don't know if people agree with that or not, but...
I'd like, that would, I think that would give some reassurance.
I just picked October out of the blue.
Yeah.
Any year that has passed.
Or maybe December or something. But that gives some reassurance.
Because I just don't see it passing before March or April. I just, the, the way this has been going, I just, I don't see it.
All right, what do you want to do?
I like, let's do a resolution that it won't take, I would say December 1st of the year we passed it. Yeah.
Nineteen, good.
Well, they don't want to mess up their season.
But in the meantime, we've got people building these things just for short-term rentals. You know, we're going to be allowing another year for what's been going on for three years because we've not done anything.
I don't think people are building them right now.
Yes, they are.
I mean, they're, they're not planning any new ones because of the uncertainty. I'd like to say it's different, but...
All right, wait a minute. So what do you want to do?
I think I thought I said what I wanted to do.
Yeah.
Do a resolution.
I like the resolution idea.
Defer the implementation date.
And in that, and whatever date, I mean, you know, whatever it would end up being, just outside the season. I'm not hung up on October, December, or whatever, but just, just to try, try to give some, some security or some semblance of, of planning that people know about how this process works, because ultimately, there's a lot of people just kind of floating around out there that don't know what's going on. And I mean, I, I agree with Rosemary's comments, I agree with Ben's comments. I mean, they're both saying, saying good things, but it's just people floating around.
Well, if, if you just gave six months from the date of adoption, wouldn't that give the, any party time to gather their signatures and go through the process and get the overlay created?
I think we better opt on a date, because we don't know when it's going to pass. I prefer, because that could hit in August.
But if it does, and you, you have the time to get the overlay, would it matter? Because the overlay within...
We don't know that. We need to give them, for somebody to share. We need to give them a date.
Okay.
Rosemary is, yeah. All right, I'm going to tell you what I think. I don't have any problem with the, with the, having an overlay district. I just think we're messing up the process, that's all. I, I think, you know, we've got the ordinance, we've sent it to the Planning Commission. When the ordinance comes back, at that time, we could do the overlay thing. I just, I, I, before we ask people to comment on the overlay, on an overlay ordinance, it just, policy, it just seems to me like the public ought to be able to know what the, what the short-term rental ordinance says. That, that's just my opinion. I'm not opposed to it. I just think the public needs, should know what the short-term rental ordinance says before we move forward with the overlay ordinance, that's all.
Well, I only recommend a process. I didn't recommend the ordinance, just so they would know what they would have to do to get work. That, that was all, it was just process.
All right, so, Barbara?
Well, I don't know why there's this assumption that it's going to take the Planning Commission so long to deal with it. I thought that's why we spent so much time sending them one ordinance to let them know that this was pretty much what we were thinking. So I don't know why we're assuming, I mean, okay, they already know what we have sent. I'm assuming then it's not going to be on their October agenda, so they've got until November. I would hope that they would be able to go ahead and act, and then it could be back to us by December of this year, not next year. But, you know, this is kind of where we were two years ago after we got the Beaches and Waterways report, and then we decide, or not me, because I voted against it, even though something was passed last week, but it was all my idea. You know, we've been just delaying this. I think that's the problem. You know, we've allowed this to continue on and on and on and on without acting. I think it's time to act. And while we're, while we keep waiting, more of them are being built, more of them are being developed in neighborhoods that are then, we, we have no way to even enforce anything in all of this time. I just don't know why we can't go ahead and get it done. That's the dilemma, is that we haven't acted. So I think we should have given the Planning Commission, act on it by November of this year, and give it back to us by December, and then we can go ahead and act. So I think we need to move it forward. I mean, and I don't mean the overlay, but I mean, I hope everything will move forward sooner rather than later.
All right, Bob?
Yeah, I think we've got to stick with the plan, anything else might be premature, and as long as we have the option to delay implementation.
John?
No.
I agree with Bobby Dyer.
I agree with Bobby.
Okay, okay. We're just, don't want to do the overlay ordinance right now, okay?
Policy, the policy.
All right. Anything else? If not, the meeting is adjourned.